Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 22 Board of County Commissioners meeting. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could all just take a moment of silence, please. Commissioner Loeb.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item D. Could I get a motion for the approval of minutes?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions, awards, and presentations. Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, ma'am. We are doing a resolution for crossing guards. Good morning. Good morning. I'm going to read this resolution, and then if you guys want to speak for a few minutes, it'd be wonderful, but thank you for all you do, your dedication to getting up early and being out there, helping our children get home and to school safe. Whereas each and every school day, dedicated crossing guards spend valuable time assisting our children across busy street intersections as they arrive and depart from school. And whereas Brevard County recognizes and places a top priority on child safety and awareness. Whereas education plays a critical role in ensuring the safety of our children and crossing guards who are there to assist and educate. And whereas, in addition to their daily service, crossing guards provide a valuable service to our communities and deserve recognition for their tireless efforts. And whereas crossing guards often encounter weather, traffic, and work hazard situations that makes the job of crossing guards a real challenge. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County does hereby recognize February 1, 2019, as Brevard County School Crossing Guard Appreciation Day, and expresses its appreciation to all crossing guards for their dedicated service. Done, ordered, and adopted this 22-day, January 2019. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, and a second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you wanted to speak. You go right ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Please, I'm sorry.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to keep the children safe to and from school. We appreciate it. We love what we do. That's it.
We thank you. We know you don't do it for the pay.
Very true.
And I see you guys out there in inclement weather, and I mean, I smile and wave to the crossing guard that's been there since my children were in elementary school, and I know that she does it because she cares about those kids, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Mike? And entourage? Let me, excuse me, let me read this resolution, and then we'll give you an opportunity to say your piece. Whereas Florida's unique ecosystems have been shaped by the influence of fire for millions of years, and as a result of this dynamic process, many plants and animals in Florida depend upon fires rejuvenating properties for their ongoing survival. And whereas prescribed fire is the application of fire under selected weather and fuel conditions to achieve specific goals such as nutrient recycling, wildlife habitat preservation, forest disease control, non-native plant control, and wildfire fuel reduction. And whereas Prescribed Fire Awareness Week was originally designated in 1997 by the Florida Governor and Cabinet to annually recognize the important role fire plays in protecting Florida's natural communities, and to remind residents that prescribed fire is a safe and cost-effective way to improve ecosystem health while reducing the risk of wildfire. And whereas the Brevard County Environmentally Endangered Lands Program, also known as Eels, and its partner agencies utilize prescribed fire as a primary management tool to maintain biological diversity on the 27,000 acres of conservation lands acquired for long-term preservation in Brevard County through the Eel Program referendum. And whereas Brevard County's nature sanctuary network is largely located within the urban interface where conservation lands are directly adjacent to both commercial and residential areas. Excuse me. Whereas the ongoing management of Brevard's nature sanctuaries is largely dependent upon the ability to utilize prescribed fire to maintain healthy ecosystems and help prevent wildfires. And whereas Brevard County residents and visitors are encouraged to support Prescribed Fire Awareness Week by visiting an Environmentally Endangered Lands Program Management and Education Center at either the Enchanted Forests in Titusville, the Sam's House in North Merritt Island, or the Barrier Island Center in Melbourne Beach to learn more about the benefits of prescribed fire. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County hereby recognizes the week of January 27 through February 3, 2019, as Prescribed Fire Awareness Week. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session on January 22, 2019. Madam Chair, I move to make this recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Mike Knight. I'm the program manager for the Endangered Lands Program. With me I have Steve McGuffey, who's our fire coordinator for the Endangered Lands Program. He's in charge of coordinating all of our burns. And Captain Ryan Sumlin with Brevard County Fire Rescue Wildfire Division. The implementation of a prescribed fire requires the expertise of many trained professionals working closely together in a challenging environment. Quality partnerships, inter-agency coordination, and open communication are absolutely critical to ensure that fire objectives are achieved while ensuring that team members and the surrounding communities are kept safe. In 1998, Brevard County experienced one of the most destructive wildfire seasons in the county's history. This unfortunate event fostered the beginnings of a multi-agency prescribed fire partnership that has played a significant role in protecting Brevard's ecosystems and our local communities. During this same timeframe, the Environmentally Endangered Lands, or EEL, program, which was established by Brevard County voters in 1990, was making good progress on acquiring conservation lands and was beginning to develop its prescribed fire management program. In 1998, the 1998 wildfires set the stage for expanding the use of prescribed fire to reduce hazardous fuel accumulation, helping to prevent the devastating effects of wildfires on our local communities, natural landscapes, and wildlife populations. It has been, this has been possible through the coordinated efforts of multiple agencies such as the Florida Forest Service, Brevard County Fire Rescue, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, the St. John's River Water Management District, the Nature Conservancy, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the Brevard County Environmentally Endangered Lands Program. The outstanding cooperation among fire agencies in Brevard County over the last 20 years has not only helped the EEL program meet its ecological management objectives, but it's also created a network of trained professionals, equipment, resources, and ongoing support that emphasizes the value of prescribed fire to our communities and establishes a framework for its safe and effective implementation. So we're grateful to the support we get from our partner agencies, many of whom could not be here today, and we thank you for your support and recognition of Prescribed Fire Awareness Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are we looking for Ene Windle? And we're pleased, our office was pleased, and Danielle was pleased to help you with this resolution. Resolution, whereas the South Brevard Debutante Assembly Committee, Dorothy Chapel Mitterling Chapter, was organized in 1969 for the purpose of annually presenting a given number of qualified young ladies to a select group of their family and friends at a formal debutante assembly ball. And whereas historically, a program designed to introduce young ladies to society at a formal debut presentation, the South Brevard Debutante Program has evolved into a leadership program that trains the next generation of leaders. And whereas the Debutante Assembly Committee selects young women in their junior year of high school from an application process that focuses on achievements and academics, community involvement, and high moral character. And whereas the debutantes then compete, complete a 15-month program that includes seminars on business, social etiquette, college preparation, event planning, and community service to broaden their perspective educationally, socially, and culturally. And whereas in 2019, the South Brevard Debutante Assembly Committee celebrates 50 years of recognizing and honoring young ladies who exemplify the qualities and commitment to family, school, and community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida hereby recognizes and commends the South Brevard Debutante Assembly Committee as they celebrate 50 years of tradition, friendship, and service. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 22-day of January AD 2019. Could I please get a motion, Commissioner?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Good morning. I am Ene Windle, and this is Lisa Bowden. And on behalf of the South Brevard Debutante Assembly Committee, we would like to thank the Brevard County Commissioners for recognizing our organization. We are very honored. We are somewhat unique in that we have been around 50 years run solely by women from our community that have volunteered to share their time, talent, and treasure with Brevard's future young women leaders. Our organization has come a long way since 1969. We have evolved from an induction into society to today's program which promotes and prepares exceptional young women for college and their future. During our 50 years, we've had around 800 young ladies become leaders through the debutante program and its traditions. Thank you again for helping us celebrate 50 years of South Brevard debutantes.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or want to record their votes? Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pull F9 for discussion.
Would you like to make a motion to approve consent minus item nine? Somebody?
Real quickly. Commissioner Loeb, okay. I just want to make one comment with respect to the denitrification project. I did speak with Ms. Barker, and she's addressed my concerns with respect to that, so I'm not going to pull that this time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda, pulling F9 for discussion.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Aside from the changes to the TDT allocation, $30,000 of funding for these cultural grants will come from the general fund. I believe while these organizations are wonderful, this board has greater fiscal priorities than funding dinosaurs. This funding can be utilized, prioritized, such items as transportation and infrastructure and public safety. So after discussion, I'd like to make a motion to remove the $30,000 of general fund allocation from this proposal and proportionally reduce the awards. Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tabia. Any other discussion or input from the commission? I'll just say, you know, I don't really have a problem with that. However, I think that since these awards have already been put in place, I think this is probably something we should be addressing maybe perhaps before the next award cycle because I'd hate to see these organizations lose after we put them through the task of having applied for and been granted the award. So I have no problem looking at this next year, and even the possibility of elimination, but right now I don't think that that would be the responsible thing to do. Commissioner Loeb?
I would just echo that as well. I think you may also want to consider, I think it may get broader support, cutting it at least initially rather than outright doing away with it and phasing it out to a degree as opposed to just wiping it all at once. But again, it'll be your motion, so I respect that however you wish to put it.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I agree with that. We did do a large cut on this a few years ago, too. So if that's something we're wanting to look at, that's probably something, I agree with you totally, Commissioner, I mean, Chair is narty. So I would think that's something we should come back with.
Commissioner Tabia?
Madam Chair, and the proposal was not to zero any of this out again. It was clear in the motion, proportionally reduce the awards, so it would be 30,000 out of 130,000, which would equal, I just ran the numbers, about a 23% reduction. So don't worry, the dinosaurs would still get a little bit over $3,000. So again, I hope that I find a second on this one so we can prioritize potholes over dinosaurs, but if not, I'm glad it's out there. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Loeb?
Would you consider instead of outright wiping the 30 that's coming out of the general fund, reducing that amount? I'll second you if you are potentially amenable to that.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thanks. I will take that and reduce the 30,000 to 29, reduce it $29,999, so there's $1 in general fund. So I would amend it that way.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I make a motion to approve item F9.
Do we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tabia first?
I think she died, right?
Yes.
Oh, well. Okay, do I get a second for Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And the only reason why I myself voted nay on that is because I'm okay with the reduction. I think we just got a little sideways on how much that should be, and perhaps it's because I misunderstood exactly the intended motion of Commissioner Tabia because, you know, I know we discussed this before during our budget meetings, and I know we talked about the reduction. I would have liked to have seen perhaps like a 20% reduction like we did with the other services. I would have been more amicable to that. So anyway, moving along. Moving on to public comments. Commissioner Tabia? Or Commissioner Loeb?
If I may, is it untimely at this point for me to move to amend what we just did? I don't know the proper terminology with respect to this, but basically to reintroduce that with a 20% reduction to that 30,000, leaving the 100 alone?
You'd have to do a motion to reconsider the prior vote.
I would so move. With a 20% reduction to the 30, so we keep the 100 as is from TDC, and then instead of 30, we just make that 80% of that number?
Okay. I won't try to repeat that motion, but I think everybody got it. Is there a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Doesn't it have to be by somebody who voted for the motion?
He was in the majority, so he would be allowed to make the motion.
Right, he can make the motion, but doesn't have to be seconded the same? I believe under Robert's rules, it could, but the board can waive Robert's rules.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett, I'd be, if it's, if you're okay with this, I'd be inclined to hear your comments on this. You know, I know you, we originally approved it, although, you know, I would have been okay with the 20%. Is that something that you could live with?
Possibly. It's, it's just everybody's got this all together. Like you said earlier, I would love to have the discussion before. How possible is it to table it and to come back?
If you want me to table it for a meeting, I'll do that.
Would that work? Just?
I think we'd have to rescind that other motion.
I'll just rescind my motion then.
And we'd have to rescind that vote, that previous vote?
Of the earlier?
Yes, please.
So we need a motion for that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and so move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett, to table the item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So I hope that was clear. The clerks off, it's okay.
Sorry.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Anthony Sargenti? Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Anthony Sargenti, 735 Highway A1A, Indy Atlantic.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm here today. I have the concession stand at the Howard Futch Park, and I've been there for about five years. And the reason I got it was to supplement my income because I have a handicapped son, and this helps support him. Over the last couple of years, business dropped off 30%, and I've done everything I can to bring it back. A lot of people come to the window and they ask if they can have a sandwich with a beer, and we say no. And they walk across the street and they go to Ichabod's or one of the other places. So I know I'm losing money that way. I always wanted to ask you guys about this, and I never thought it was possible, but I was speaking to Derek. He has the concession stand, he's behind me here at Melbourne Beach, and he said, he mentioned it to the parks, and they said it's doable. So right away, as soon as I heard that, I, you know, went into high gear, and I found out that through one of the lawyers, the county lawyer, that if we fenced in my eating area and I hung signs that they could only have the beer and wine at my tables, that it's possible. I've had a restaurant for about four or five years, and I had full liquor license, and I employed two people, they both worked with me there, so we know how to handle beer and wine, okay? And we card, we'll card the people, and we'll make it the best we can. But if I don't get the beer and wine, I'm afraid that I might have to close up, and I don't want to do that because the people love the fact that we're there. And I employ two local people, and they both have families, and right now they only work half, half a week because I had to cut their hours. I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any comment? I, you know, this issue was kind of been talked about a little bit with staff, and I would, I would be interested in us looking at this item if possible.
Yeah, we've had, we got some of the backup data, so we can bring it back to the board in February for your consideration.
That would be great. And maybe also include some information that may be unique to Mr. Sargenti's property as to like, address his specific situation versus, you know, the impacts overall with the county, if we could do that?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anybody want to get more comments? Okay. All right, Derek Thompson?
That's cold. How are you?
Name and address, please.
It's 2525 South A1A, Melbourne Beach. I've got the concession stand, Billy's on the beach in Melbourne. I'm in the same situation as Tony. I've only had it just over a year, but in the last seven, eight months, we've seen a big decline. We've tried doing Bite Squad for deliveries, we've changed our menu, we've put adverts on Facebook and stuff like that. The only thing that we can see is adding wine, beer and wine as well to our establishment as well. We're just a family-run business, me and my wife runs it, and our son comes in at lunchtime and helps us.
Okay. Great, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Lyndon Campbell?
5005 Fishdale Palm. Is this my timer, apparently?
Yes.
Addressing the issue of, I'm going to use the term abusive code enforcement, particularly in Canaveral Grove, although I'm finding it's extended further. I had an issue with mowing, which I could not address. I tried to contact even the Commissioner's Office and many other agencies, and got little support. And we now are running into a situation, quite a number of working people out there who have, I think you like to use the term Conax boxes, are being cited, given almost no time to remove them. They're fairly large, and it's about like moving a house. And what disturbs me is these have been out there for years. The area has an agricultural aspect to it, and if you look at it, agriculture is commercial. If you look at it, it's called agribusiness. And there's a number of commercial businesses, agricultural working out there. And yet there is arbitrary and capricious, I think is the term, because I can find nothing in the code that even applies. And yet they're given 10 days to remove these boxes, and often they're full. And it's part of their livelihood, one, but two, they're using it, and I wanted to get one, too, as a storm shelter because the engineering is rated in excess of 200 miles an hour. You tie them down, and they're better than many storm shelters. So their lives and their livelihood are being threatened and offered no recourse. It appears that it is abusive. And I'm getting to the point, from everything I've seen talking to them and what happened to me, that it appears constitutional approaches using the other branches of government may be the only remaining approach if we can't get satisfaction with our elected officials, you ladies and gentlemen. I, I hope it doesn't come to that. I understand some of you know my son. He's an attorney. Lyndon Campbell is my name, his name is Charlie. I hope we don't have to go there. I'd like this to be handled in a civil, professional manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, we, we've had a lot of calls from our district on people using shipping containers for storage. It's, it's against code right now. We're trying to figure out a way that we can make this work somehow, but what happens is people are moving these on, and they're actually adding on to their houses. So we've got a real, we've got a real struggle trying to figure out here. But I've talked to staff, and I actually prepared something. I was going to see if the commission would, would help me with this, agree to it right now. I'd like to get staff to prepare a report that would go ahead and examine these containers to be used for residential storage buildings. And I would also ask if y'all, if y'all would please grant it that we don't proceed right now with enforcement complaints until the staff comes back to the board with some, maybe some remedy for this. So, you know, sir, we're, we're trying, but you have a lot of neighbors out there, too, that are irritated about it. So I've got both sides of you kind of going back and forth on it right now, and we're doing our best to try to figure out something, to make something fair and equitable, but it's going to take a little bit of time and work, and staff's really trying hard on this. So, 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 Commissioner, if you wouldn't mind, if you would go ahead and allow me that, that little bit of time with staff to work something out, I certainly would appreciate it.
Commissioner Loeb?
Rather than just having a blanket pause on that, could we say a month or six weeks at your preference? Because I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, I hate to say until it comes back, and then perhaps it doesn't come back?
Certainly. I think Tab was working on it within the next month or two. I think he's already got some information for us, but...
So you want to say eight weeks, then?
He said yes.
Okay, if someone wants to make a motion, I'll second.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize, I'm not very familiar with this issue, and I'm a little hesitant to put a blanket pause on enforcement on something that I honestly have no idea about, so...
Well, I can tell you, it's not in our code. It's not addressed in our code because this issue was brought... this issue was brought to us by staff, and there's not anything in there about shipping containers. So that's why I think that...
Well, there's not anything in there about spaceships either, but I don't think you can park a spaceship on, on, you know, on the front of your yard. So can I, if you don't mind, can I get a little bit explanation from Tad on this, as to why we're potentially doing this, if it is in fact not in our code, or what the background is a little bit more?
Good morning, Commissioners. So on the shipping containers, the, they are considered commercial equipment currently. Our zoning code does not specifically address them, but they do, it does address commercial equipment. And so the, the former director of the department had a policy, and a formal interpretation of the zoning code that said that they would not be allowed, because they're considered the commercial equipment. So I believe that what we would have to do is to look into how we would be able to allow them as residential accessory structures.
Follow, follow-up, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Thank you. Do you, are you aware of how other counties handle these shipping containers? And what is the definition of commercial equipment, to see, you know, how close it is? Do you have those offhand, or is that what would be contained in probably the report?
I, I believe that's what we would be providing in the report. I do not have that information offhand. You know, when you think about, like, commercial vehicles is one of the areas in the code where it talks about commercial vehicles being stored in residential areas. If you have a, like, a single-axle box truck as your personal vehicle, that's not considered a, a residential use. It's not allowed in those, in those zoning classifications. And I believe that that's how this has been viewed historically. So we would be looking at over, you know, kind of overturning that, that mindset.
One, one more follow-up?
Sure.
Thank you. If we were to hit a pause on this, can, can you explain to me how that would hand out? Would fines continue to be accrued? And then what would happen, assuming we came out with a different interpretation of commercial equipment, we allowed this? What, what would happen with the folks that have gone ahead and paid those fines, as well as those that are currently in the system? How, I, I'm not sure, changing code or the interpretation of code, how that's been handled in the past. Are you aware how we would do that?
I, I believe that it would be something new to me in changing something like this. The, the, the thought that we had internally was we would just not proceed with any additional ones at this point. I can't tell you, I, I don't know the number of the ones that we have gone through code enforcement where they have removed them. That would be something that we could include in the report as well. I certainly understand the concern, is if it wasn't okay, and now it is okay, there would, there would be, you know, an impact to the folks that had to get rid of them through that process.
Commissioner Loeb?
It's a question for Ms. Bentley. Is there a particular way that you'd like to see this motion phrased to prevent there being any sort of ambiguity, and to potentially help us avoid or obviate any problems with any sort of existing enforcement that may be impacted by this?
Well, I think we understand that the concept is to abate citations at this point, if that's where you go. If you would like us to defer or terminate the accrual of fines, you could give us that direction as well. That would help.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah. Tad, about how many do you think properties we have out there that you currently have these storage containers on them?
I know we've been getting an increased number of complaints on them recently, but I don't know the exact number. But I do know that we've been getting an increased number of complaints.
And I think they've been there for a while, also.
About that. In some cases, yes.
Yeah, so this, this, this is, this is a little difficult, just because some of them have been there for a long period of time. Not that it makes it okay, but I think the residents really actually thought of it as being like an outside utility shed. So I would just still request that you guys would just give a little time for staff to come back. And I agree, there needs to be a time limit on it, and figure this out. It might not go well for the residents, and it might go well for the residents, depending on which side that they're on. But I, I think it's something, just for all fairness for our community, we should maybe consider. So again, I would appreciate anything you guys would do for the Canaveral Groves area here.
Commissioner Loeb?
Just gonna say, Commissioner Pritchett, if you want to phrase the motion, since it's, it's something that impacts your district more so than perhaps others, I'd be happy to second it.
Thank you, sir. Then I, I would request that we have staff prepare a report that would examine the containers, and to see how they could possibly be utilized for residential storage buildings or not. And then I would ask that this commission would maybe not proceed with coast, code enforcement complaints for eight weeks? Okay.
And that would include the deferral of any fines that are already imposed, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Just kind of hit pause for eight weeks.
I'll second it.
A motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb. No more discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tobia and the nays.
Barbara Campbell, 5005 Fishdale Palm, Cocoa. Related to that other guy, Campbell.
Thank you.
Um, yes, I, I am talking about the same thing. The, just to jump to the bottom line, I have a friend who has a hearing Thursday before the magistrate on her situation. Now, is that going to stop?
I would understand that we would table the item until the report comes back.
Okay, so she doesn't have to face the magistrate Thursday?
Yeah, we'll need to send you a formal notice.
Yeah, okay. All right. I, I checked on these cases. Now, I know personally of probably four or five. The citation they use is Section 621331, unpermitted uses in GU zoning. These cases aren't violating that. They're, they're single-family detached residential dwellings. They have accessory buildings. That section refers also to Section 621102. Again, no violation. It talks about accessory buildings, which are not included but not limited to garage, storage sheds, and so, so forth. So we could even, you know, skate under the "not limited to" these buildings. Also, Section 622100.5, again, no violation. These people in Canaveral Grove, the lot sizes are all at least an acre. So they could have four buildings. There's, they're not exceeding the building limit. There's, you know, I understand what, what Tad said about commercial. However, again, these are not, what's the word, semi-trailers. They have no wheels. They're just, they're boxes. They're storage buildings. And my friends have been using these. They, they depend on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Mark Shropshire? Shropshire. I think I got that right. Name and address, please?
Good morning. My name is Mark Shropshire, 4645 Allen Shepherd Avenue. I'm addressing the issue. I, I also had a, a violation that I corrected, and that got me into seeing some of the problems with the system. And I just, even though I've been, my corrections have been made, I'd like to be part of the solution to the problem still. So I wrote down four things, five things, that you might want to be taking a look at. Probably at the top of the list, that is most, probably most offensive to most of the, the property owners out there, is the anonymous complaints. These seem to be used as a weapon to hurt neighbors. The first level of resolution is a neighbor going to a neighbor. An amenity takes an issue to a level beyond community resolution, and then involves a government entity. Number two, excuse me, Brevard County Code is being subjectively applied in a non-incorporated areas of the county with GU, AU, ARR, et cetera. Property owners are receiving code enforcement violations under the restrictions applied to RU properties. Number three, the structure of fines for code violations is not proportioned to the violation. At $500 for a magistrate fee and $1,000 a day, a person could lose their home in six months for having a shed out back. That just doesn't seem right. Number four, the Brevard County Code seems to have many vaguenesses to it. In the code, there, there isn't even a word Conex Box, Shipping Container, CCAN, all the words used. It doesn't describe them at all. And it's often made up, seems to be, if you talk to people out there, over the years, the definitions have changed over the years. That's vagueness. Number five, the state of Florida is encouraging local agriculture through small farms and alternative enterprise programs. It seems like the way we're being looked at in rural areas, in MEMS, and it's across the board throughout the whole county, all the rural areas, is that this is being discouraged. If you want to become a agricultural property, you're in trouble. You ain't going to do it, because you're not going to get permission. But the state is saying, hey, there's a lot of things that we can encourage by doing this.
Mr. Shropshire?
Mm-hmm.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. I want to thank, I'm smiling today, because it's been at least 10 years since I've had the time to have peace of mind. And anyways, I'm recovering now, and I feel a little bit more than what I used to, and my card's on the lagoon. And what I'm looking for is one of your offices, or show me the way. I don't want to go to Natural Resources and all these other people. I want to see one of the commissioners, preferably Kurt Smith. And you've been helpful. I appreciate all your efforts. And I've done it. I've disclosed it. And I'm looking at maybe two months it might take to make a drastic change. And I, I've experienced it. And this is what I would like to not only explain it and put it on paper, and give you a program of what I've conceived, but also demonstrate the technique that's needed in order to change the environment. And just, just cleaning the sludge out, or having the places, which is good. And all the efforts are good, but that's not changing. It's just addressing the symptom. It's not really addressing the problem. It's cleaning the place up, but the problem's still there. And if you convert the environment, it will retain itself and make its own changes. But first, it has to be at that level. And just cleaning the sludge out, or having these programs. And what I'd like to do is work with the sheriff's agencies, and I'll tie all the conversations I've been expressing for 10 years. I'll tie them all together in my program. But we can use the inmates, the low infraction inmates, people that run stop signs, and give them the opportunity. Not only will they learn, and they'll also gain respect for our environment in the lagoon, but they'll offset some of their expenses or whatever. But the word of mouth, people don't know. And this is why I haven't disclosed anything. And it's got to do with facing my problems. And FACE is an acronym, I guess the name, Flow Agitation Circulation Exchange. And the reason why I submitted a, my route form, where I did my route, one of the main reasons, and I, I did the whole thing, and the whole lagoon, but it's because the Banana River and the Indian River come to a point at that section, and the amount of water going up there, anyways, I'll continue this on another, but the, the amount of water going in the lagoon is not sufficient. And I have a program, and I'll show you. It's evident. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. Karen Atwell?
Karen Atwell, 3775 Felda, Canaveral Grove.
You can pull that down, if that's easier for you.
I'm here just real quick to tell you that the Conex boxes, I'm, we're back to that for just one minute. I have looked and researched the people that are out there. There's about 60 or more people that have them. Someone's been out there about 25 years or longer. When you see that, you think you're able to put them out there. We had made a design, had a, an engineer come draw up the plans to put a top over ours' walls, concrete it to the floor and to the ground. We got ours, we had to move them. We have incurred a lot of expenses, and now we've got to move them again from another place that we've had them in, commercial property. A friend of mine just had hers, she took them out the day, last week, and one today. We have incurred a tremendous amount of expense getting these took care of. My second thing is, I don't have the code with me, but in yours, it says on commercial property, they can only have them for 90 days, two times a year. So that's a concern for people who have them on commercial properties. And I think we, as, our, we got ours property changed to ag, because we want to have bees. We wanted to make one our bee house, so that we could spin our honey and sell our honey, but also have our bees. And then I have a small garden, and I wanted to be able to store my supplies out of rodent, in rodent-free, because they can't get in them, equipment, the Conex boxes. But also, the commercial property, look at the commercial properties around here that has them. And I'm talking about like, one up in, off of US1, up in Cocoa. They have probably about 30, and there's double stacked. And that's, according to your rules, are not allowed. So there's, you know, there's not a balance in what can be, what one person can have and what another person can have. So that's just what, I just wanted to say that. And thank you.
Thank you. And this is related to an earlier public comment, but, you know, just, Commissioner Anderson, when he was in District 5, came up with a good idea, and I'm sure Mr. Batte knows about it, and obviously staff does. What our office does is we don't accept anonymous complaints. Now, of course, the argument is, what if you're afraid of your neighbor? What if you're fearful for your life? I understand that. So what we do is we, one of our staff members, myself, Mr. Lubker, Ms. Stern has gone out. We will go out and investigate it ourselves. And if we deem it, it's, it's a public safety issue, or it's, you know, injurious to the, to the neighbor, we put the code complaint in our name. And that way, it protects the neighbor from any sort of retaliation. Usually the neighbor kind of configure out on their own, or maybe they speculate, but rather than put somebody in a potentially back-and-forth or dangerous situation. And it's really eliminated a lot of neighbor drama, because people will call back and forth on each other several times. And it's, it's a really great office policy that Commissioner Anderson put in place, and I just thought I would share that. Commissioner Loeb?
I was going to say, just to piggyback that, I, I know Fritz and I went back and forth in the office about whether we were going to keep it anonymous, which was how it was prior to my coming here, or whether we'd, whether we'd change it. And quite frankly, we were so ambivalent as to which way was better, we just decided if it's, if it's something that's been operated in a certain way for a period of time, if we don't know that clearly a change would be better, we'll just keep it as is. But I, I think your way actually sounds like it has some of the merits of both sides. So I'm, I'm going to reconsider that over the next couple of weeks, and, and perhaps have some sort of a change along those lines.
It works very well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Typically, we do that, too. I agree with you. We, people usually tell us who they are, but they're a little concerned about getting out to their neighbors, and not necessarily just in this situation. So we do our best to try to do what's best for each person individually. So I, I agree. But I think the biggest part of their complaint is they thought that realtors were going in and filing these to improve property values. But we didn't find that. We, we kind of checked into that. I wanted to be sure of it. So I, I think this is just legitimate. People just... People just have a concern, and they're very tight out there, and they don't want to know who they're concerned about who, so.
And now, it doesn't stop neighbors from trying to go back and forth when they call the office and say, I'm fearful, but we usually can weed that out pretty quick through going out there, but.
Us, too. With you.
All right. Moving on to item H1. Commissioner, indulge me for a second. Oh, wait. I'm sorry, we have more public comments?
That's it?
No. Okay, item H1. I placed this item on the agenda while I have a prepared statement as to try to keep things in order. We have quite a few comment cards. I'll just summarize and say that this is for the repeal of the independent special district that was put in place by the county commission in 1990. Since that time, this special independent district has not collected a tax. They've operated based on private donations, that sort of thing. They were pretty dormant for a while, you know, not filing any paperwork, not doing anything for several years in the middle. And most recently, July of last year, they came before the board and wanted us to put this to referendum, and the commission denied that request by four commissioners that are current today. So that's where we are, and I can argue the point later, but I figure, since there's so many cards, I'll let the public speak first, and then I'll speak again later, if that's okay with the commission? All right. I'll read two names, and you'll have three minutes. John Fernandez, and after John, we're going to have Bob White.
Good morning. John Fernandez, 998, Waco, Louisiana, southeast Palm Bay, Florida. I urge the council to repeal the Children's Services Council, because it's a scam. It so happened that any time these groups, or these field citizens come down to the council, they want to tax the property owners of our county. Many of us, we are on a fixed income, and it so happened that their bright ideas come down, they want to tax our property owners. Historically, these groups have done nothing to benefit the community, and I think it should be repealed. And learning through my make program this morning, and I do agree that they should not go on scamming the taxpayers of this county, and many of us have come from other counties that have gone through this, scamming issues, taking monies out of our pockets that we cannot afford to live on. And it is sad that it falls upon the poor people of the county to pay for the scammers that they don't have nothing to do to benefit our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Bob White, and after Bob, we'll have Alice Kreitz.
Good morning. Bob White, 512, Southern Hills Court in Suntry. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Republican Liberty Caucus, the Florida organization, as well as the local organization, both of which I have the privilege of chairing. You know, one of the principles that we as an organization exist to support and defend and advocate for is the principle of limited government. That principle, of course, is built on what we believe is the absolute truth, that governments are established by the governed to do for us only those things that we can't do adequately or efficiently for ourselves. I'm the first to admit that I can't go out and clear the land and pave a road. I can't provide my own sanitary sewer system, I can't provide drainage, I can't provide police and fire protection. Those are things that the governed, look to government to do for us. However, this, the idea of supporting children and supporting the poor in our community, and the people that are underprivileged in our community, that is something that we can do for ourselves. So I don't think there's anything better that you could do to start out the new year than to take a vote today to limit both the size and the scope of government, which is what this vote to repeal this ordinance would be. You know, I can honestly tell you that as a community, I think that we are a very generous community, we are a very giving community. There are any number of different private charities, foundations, that we can give our money to, to solve the problem of children that are, that have need. And so I would just simply advocate to you today that you should let us handle this problem, because not only can we handle it, we can handle it much more efficiently than you can. What you're talking about is an enormous bureaucracy that will waste a tremendous amount of money. Let us take care of the problem by doing it through our local churches and through all of these different charities and foundations that exist for this purpose. So this is one of those areas where government just needs to get out of the way, you don't need a tax for this, let us keep more of our money, we'll be generous with it, we'll take care of the problem ourselves. Thank you very much for your time this morning.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Loeb?
I just wanted to mention, since Bob referenced the RLC, I am an RLC member, I don't think it impacts this in any way, but just to be upfront with everyone.
After Alice, we're going to have William Haskell.
I'm just so happy that we have this.
Can I get your name and address, please?
Yes, it's Alice Kreitz, and I live in 1770 Goldfinch Court in Melbourne, Florida. And I am just so pleased that you brought this to the attention of all of us who did not know much about this council, because they've never really accomplished much that we know of, and certainly not for the children. Anything with children, and it always appeals to voters, and that's why I'm praying that this does not go to a referendum, which is totally unnecessary for this type of thing. This was just an ordinance that was passed, as you say, in 1990, and it can be very easily suppressed and done away with, and that's what I feel should happen. This is really taxation without representation. We can't vote the council members out. There are many big names that are behind some of this, connected with Florida Today, and Florida Today has printed articles about the meetings that have been, that have happened, which is where I got a lot of my information, as to the dates and all. But the residents that I know, and the groups that I'm in, none of them want to sustain this Children's Council. And it's not because we don't have grandchildren and children, it's just because it is disturbing to see that a political action committee is pushing a tax referendum on behalf of this council, because this PAC group is, you know, Put Brevard Kids First, is co-chaired by Jeff Keel, who is the former president of Florida Today, and regional president of Gannett. And there's people on this committee, on this volunteer committee, that have a lot of money and influence in the county, and yet they've never had a benefit for this particular council. Many of us get invitations all the time to fundraising events for various charities in the county, and we go to them if they are doing something for the county. We've seen nothing that has transpired from this particular council. And there are so many charities, I think there's about 400 in Brevard County, that are worthy of mandatory taxation, perhaps, but they don't come to you and ask for this type of agreement, and we don't agree with it. In fact, I've talked even to teachers who don't agree that this is necessary at all. Look at what's happened with this particular council in Palm Beach County and Broward County. They have wasted millions of dollars, and it does add up to millions, surprisingly, very quickly, to operate this council, and they've seen, they've seen nothing coming from it. And yet, there are people involved in it that are making big salaries. If approved, the residents would see a special property tax, if you put this to a referendum anyway, or if you approve this, of 25 cents per thousand of taxable value in the first year, which would collect about 8.4 million in the first year, and then every year after that, we would see a rate of 33 cents, which would.
Ms. Alice?
Yes.
I hate to cut you off, but I can't let.
It would collect 11.4 million dollars, and that's just utterly ridiculous to have that kind of money.
Thank you.
For a council, thank you.
Okay, we have Peter Fusckus, and after Peter, we have Lois Lacostin, Lacost?
I think Bill Haskell first.
Oh, did I miss Bill Haskell?
Yeah.
I apologize. I'm sorry, Bill.
Sorry, Pete.
I think you got attached to another card there, I apologize.
Well, good morning, fellow citizens.
Can I get your name and address, please?
I'm going to give it to you right now.
Okay.
My name is Bill Haskell, I'm at 4301 Stony Point Road, Melbourne. And my three favorite things are little dogs, well, not necessarily in this order, but vets, little dogs, and children. And I don't have any children. And I am actively involved in a lot of charities. For example, a few nights ago, I spent most of the night at the Cold Night Shelter helping people. So I am very concerned about helping people, and I, to quote one of your members, I would like to stress to you that your primary job is needs, not wants. And if there are alternatives, such as non-government organizations, and churches, and others, they should be relied on. I'm also not impressed with the lack of a solid program to do this, and that this has been waxing for many years, or the possibility of, as Ms. Kreitz said, the large waste. You folks have very limited money, I hope you realize that, considering the waste in previous years where they were going up spending like this, if you've seen the Scott Ellis chart. And with the new developments coming in here, and with the changes you're having to make in roads, and the paving of roads, that are costing huge amounts of money, I think you have to be very judicious. I am very concerned about the children, and about in past years when they didn't have enough food, when there were jobs. Today, there's jobs, there's more jobs and more availability, and I think parents have to be parents and step up and be parents, and I don't think, there's so many other problems that we have to deal with, and I don't want the taxes in this area to go up, because it's going to affect the poor people that live in trailer parks and others, they're going to be hurt just as much, and the retired people. So I hope you think of this in a very concrete way, and get something well-developed that will serve this. This is just, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Haskell. Peter, and after Peter, Louis.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Peter Fusckus, Melabar, 1855 Sandy Creek Lane. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to take a look at where the county is right now, since 1990. The county budget is over a billion dollars. 80% is dedicated funds, over which we have little or no control over how it's spent. 20% is the general fund expenditures, 220 million. 52% of that or more is for the constitutional offices. So of the remaining 100 million, we only have about 38 million dollars out of a billion-dollar budget, at which we have discretionary spending. So what does this have to do with children's services? Well, as proposed, funding children's services will not only add 11.54 million to our county mandated expenditures, again, over which we will have little oversight, little control, or little say of where it's going to go. Do we really need to add that burden to our tax base? Do we really need to add that mandated expenditures to what we have, which is the vast majority of our budget? I'm concerned about the critical needs of the county, and I'm not going to enumerate There's only so much we can do to encumber our tax base, and it's the growth of that tax base that concerns me the most. Now, over 10 years, we're looking at 120 million dollars in children's services, again, over which we have no control, we have no oversight, and by the way, I don't think I have seen a detailed, comprehensive children's services plan. And before, what is it? It's not good public policy to vote for a 10-year funding mandate before you know where those funds are going to be used. I think Commissioner Pritchett said that back in July. Before we move forward, let's have a detailed service plan, so that we know where those monies are going. Do we have such a plan?
Did you want me to respond during your time?
Sure.
Well, when they presented the item in July, they had a sort of like an outline of where those potential monies could go, based on, you know.
By programs?
Right.
By companies? I mean, by service providers?
Correct. And whether or not you would agree with what they presented, because some programs received, you know, or would have, if they would have went with that plan, were asking for a million or more, you know.
Well, good, so you're.
But is that fair and equitable? Is for you to decide. But they presented sort of an outline, because those were questions that we had, like, what do you plan on doing with this? What services do you pair? And they did a nice job of laying that out.
Good. And I'm glad you're armed with a service plan, so that you have a better idea on how to fund it.
Well, that was in July, they presented their plan, and commission opted not to go to referendum, based on that information.
Yeah. Well, I'm opposed to the, I'm opposed to burdening, continually burdening this county's tax base, because we have our own critical needs to take care of. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Fusckus. After Louis Lacost, we have Connie Smith.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Lois Lacost.
I'm sorry.
And I live at 6755 100 Acre Drive in Port St. John, Florida. I appeared before you in July of last year over the same issue, and I think at that time, your constituents, the residents of Brevard, spoke loud and clear that they were against this charity becoming a taxpayer burden. So here we are again, to decide whether taxes should go up again for Brevard residents to fund a charity, the Children's Services Council. Brevard residents spoke loud and clear six months ago, before our county commissioners, regarding this charity organization. How many ways and how many times do we have to tell the Children's Services Council we are not interested, and we need to abolish the children's services tax? This is a wasteful welfare program that has existed for 30 years. The committee sponsoring the council in Brevard is made up of well-connected politicians, bureaucrats, lobbyists, and political insiders to plot for a future property tax hike to line their own pockets. They want 120 million of our tax money, and no oversight for how this slush fund is spent. I lived in Broward County for 31 years, so I am very aware of taxpayer dollars spent on extravagant salaries and huge sprawling oversized buildings for Children's Services Council in Broward and Palm Beach Counties, which have not worked out well. Tens of millions have been wasted on six-figure executive salaries, travel perks, and oversized buildings. My husband and I moved to Brevard County 14 years ago, and we loved living here. But in the past, in the last four years, we've seen two sales tax hikes, property tax hikes, and increases on stormwater, trash, at least they show up at my home twice a week, ambulance transfer, and fire assessments. And the latest half-cent sales tax for the Indian River Lagoon has not shown any improvements either. Your answers always seem to be to increase taxes. However, our tax money should never go to a charity like the Children's Services Council. That is unfair to worthy charities. Charity contribution should be private voluntary contribution, not forced taxpayer funding. Real charity comes from individuals, not government. I am retired now, and I live on a fixed income. My cost of living increase is a joke, amounting to pennies per day. I cannot afford having my taxes increased again, especially for a charity. Those who want to give to a charity should do so, but taxpayers should not be mandated to pay taxes for the benefit of the Children's Services Council charity. And lastly, when are parents going to raise and be responsible? to raise and be responsible for the children they are having?
Lois, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. After Connie Smith, we'll have Ted Delbinzo-Talbizno.
Connie Smith, oh, here I go, 15, in Indian River Drive, Coco, Florida. I'm here to add my family's full support to Commissioner Isnardi's proposal to eliminate the Children's Services Council. We all, and this sounds redundant, but I'm going to say it over and over. We all contribute, in our own way, to charities we hold dear. But I was shocked to find out a Florida statute gives the Children's Services Council the right to place a referendum on the ballot. And if that referendum were to pass, property taxpayers would be on the hook to fund another huge bureaucracy, made up of unelected officials spending taxpayers' dollars on their own charity choices. And everybody has to remember, not all voters are property owners. But all voters would get to vote on a referendum that funds charities, and they'd fund it with property tax money. This is an outrageous, slippery slope for funding charitable organizations. No charitable board should have the power to tax citizens. I want to thank Commissioner Isnardi for having the backbone to bring this to the citizens' attention, and coming up with the only solution to abolish the CSC board. Remember, charities will still be funded by independent people. It's the bureaucratic board that needs to be eliminated. But I have one question. In the county charter, in Section 5.1.3, titled "Limitation on ordinances by initiative," I'd like to know if an initiative is a referendum.
There's also a petition procedure for a charter amendment. There are two different sections that say essentially the same sort of thing.
Would this charter, would this override the Florida statute that gives the CSC the ability to tax Brevard County citizens?
What you have is a proposal to put it on the ballot from the summer. But right now, what we're talking about is a repeal of the ordinance that established the children's...
Well, I understand that. But in this, in this section, it actually says that the collection of taxes is...
Right. There is an issue that has been identified by both the Children's Services Council and our office regarding the ability to do that, because it's a tax-related item.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted, and after Ted, we'll have Jeff Keel.
My name is Ted Dalbizno, 1410 Lara Circle Rockledge. The speakers before me covered this topic so beautifully. I don't want to waste your time, so I waive the time allocated to me to speak.
Okay.
Thank you. But just, I support the repeal, of course.
Okay. Thank you. After Jeff Keel, we'll have Krista Sobolli.
Good morning.
Sobolli.
For the record, I'm Jeff Keel, 2898 Wyndham Way, and I'm no longer employed by Florida Today, just for the record. I am the co-chair of Put Brevard Kids First, a committee that was established to educate the community ahead of a ballot measure, if the measure was placed on the ballot, pursuant to the meeting in July. In 2018, after understanding the unmet needs and for services of kids in our community, I volunteered my time to help do something about it. In my prior role as president of Florida Today, I had the benefit of seeing the good work done by many nonprofit community organizations providing these services. I was also exposed to the unmet needs, which are growing and not shrinking. And the implication that this can all be solved by charities is just not realistic. I hear it, but it's not realistic. That's why I volunteered to help upon leaving Florida Today. The resistance has been disheartening and unfortunate for our community, and we're hearing some of it today. I have attended most of the CSC meetings as a volunteer since April 2018, and seen a very talented, dedicated, caring group of council members and volunteers. It is an impressive, caring, and well-intentioned group of professionals. Unfortunately, they and the cause they represent has been maligned. It's one thing to have a philosophical difference and debate about them. It is quite another to provide for the implication that this is a group of bandits dealing on self-interest. This commission holds lots of power to keep this from the community at large. There are other ways you can play a part, and there are other models where you have more control over funding. Orange County and Indian River are two examples. I encourage you to be part of the solution, because I don't see a solution without you. I'm not sure that, what the rush is, but if the energy that is put into keeping these efforts to keep the door open for solutions to helping kids is successful, the true loser will be the kids and families in our community. The urgency being displayed is confusing, and I hope you will consider that before casting a vote. The other thing I'd like to say is, there was a number of comments from people who have come from other counties where they've had CSCs, and how awful it was. And the only question I would ask about that is, because what happened in the last couple of years, those who had CSCs had to go back to vote to see if the voters wanted to continue them. And in every case, they were overwhelmingly, 75-plus percent of the voters, said, "We see the value in them. We think it's important enough for our community. We want it to continue." So the implication that it's a disaster, the voters wouldn't have voted to keep it going if they thought it was a disaster, and there was millions and millions and millions of dollars of wasted money spent. So thank you for hearing me today.
Commissioner Loeb.
Mr. Keel, could I have you come back up for just a moment, please?
Yes.
No, I'm just concerned about something you said. You mentioned that the CSC has been maligned. I'm just wondering, the first eight individuals that came up here, and the more direct you are with the response, the more likely I am to have some empathy with respect to your cause. Did any of those eight individuals say anything that you're aware of that was factually incorrect?
It's not, it's not just here, Commissioner Loeb.
Well, let me finish my question, if I may.
Look at, look at social media. I mean, the implication, there is a very...
Is that a no?
Has anyone here said anything?
Has anyone, you said that you were malign, in case if you would allow me to ask my question. You mentioned that you were malign. There were eight individuals who came up here prior to you. Did any of those individuals say anything that was factually correct? As I mentioned, the more direct your answer, the more likely I am to be empathetic to your cause.
Well, I think there have been misstatements of facts.
Which specific facts were misstated by any of those eight individuals?
I think the implication of how money is spent, the implication of how the council is doing their job...
I'm not talking about implication. What specific statements did any of them make that were factually correct?
I don't have a list of them, but we've been living...
Let's have one.
What?
One statement.
I don't have, I don't have one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
After Krista Sobolli, is it Sobolli?
Sobolli.
Sobolli, I'm sorry. We have Kim Ruzenka.
I came to speak here because...
Name an address, thanks.
I live in Melbourne, and my address is 1597 Sienna Drive. And I'm deeply concerned about, basically, how the shifts that are going on in the economy are affecting the family. And I feel that we have a moral obligation to address some of the issues. Just to get a picture of what's going on, the suicide rate in Brevard County among children, school-aged children, is one of the highest in the state. I have looked at the Governor's Task Force report on Baker Acts, and we are also among the highest in the state of Florida. Currently, we have almost 3,000 homeless students, which is approximately 3% of the school-age population. And we have between 50 and 60% of our students on free and reduced lunch. So even those students that are not homeless are under pressure. I feel this every day. My daughter goes to University of Florida, and her roommate just chipped her tooth. She's having trouble paying for that tooth to be fixed. And she has four crowns. We were talking about maybe she could go to Mexico to get those fixed. This is a big concern. If you look at it, our high-tech workforce, we need to start thinking about these businesses, and the type of skills that you need in order to run these businesses. If you don't have somebody that's trained with a high skill, or a high skill level, they're not going to be able to, you know, build airplanes, and build the type of supply, you know, fill the types of jobs that suppliers are looking for, in order to fill those jobs. So in order to get that, that higher skill set, you need to fulfill some of those basic needs, the physiological needs, the needs for safety. And that's what some of the early learning council, that's the type of things that they're going to be able to accomplish, is by creating like a foundation, in order to prepare ourselves later for these high-tech jobs. And all of this is going to help in the economy in the long run, in this county. To think that charities are going to work, it's not going to happen. I mean, we, what we, they're not structured in a way that's going to allow the money to follow the needs of the child. So that's why I'm asking that you reconsider this initiative, and bring this referendum to the public.
Ms. Ruzenka, your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Ruzenka.
Thank you.
And after Ms. Ruzenka, we have Bunny Finney.
Good morning, Chairman Isnardi, members of the County Commission. I'm Kim Ruzenka with the Office of Cantwell &amp; Goldman. Early in 2018, I was asked to assist the CSC with the ballot initiative to fund the CSC on a pro bono basis. I was not familiar with the CSC, so I researched and I learned. The CSC is an independent special taxing district. It was organized by county ordinance in 1990. It is authorized by Florida Statute 125901, which defines the powers, obligations, and functions of the CSC. It is a special district as defined by Chapter 189 of the Florida statutes. It is a unit of local government created for a special purpose. It is composed of 10 members of the community that are appointed or elected, and are well-known in the community. I learned that the CSC is not a charity. It is not a scam or corrupt, which you heard here today. So that's how they've been maligned, at least here today. So my goal in agreeing to help the CSC was to implement state and county law, to follow the law. What the County Commission proposes to do here today, by mere ordinance of dissolution of the CSC, does not follow state law, county law, or the Florida Constitution. In fact, the CSC does have taxing authority, by ordinance, by state law, and by the Florida Constitution. The electorate must approve this ordinance, if it's passed, to dissolve it. I have prepared a memo, but I don't want to give it to you yet, because I don't want you reading it as I'm going through it. The CSC has been given taxing authority, but that taxing authority has not been exercised to date. There are a number of attorney general opinions that support this, and some case law as well, which I've defined for you in my memo and attached them. Several Florida attorney general opinions discuss taxing authority by special districts, and have stated that its special district's taxing authority is found in the Florida Constitution and statutes prescribing the ability to tax. Simply because the electorate has not approved the millage does not eliminate the taxing authority of the CSC that has been granted by the legislature and the County Commission. In AGO Opinion 2007-17, the Attorney General opined the Landarch Village Water and Sewer District could only be dissolved by election, because their authority to levy was by approval of bonds that had to be approved by the electorate. Because the CSC has been granted taxing authority, the County Commission cannot dissolve this on their own. There are a number of other legal issues that need to be addressed, that were simply disregarded in your legal opinions. This taxing authority was not discussed at all in your legal opinions. There are at least four or five issues. There are three options I'd ask you to consider before making a decision that, an illegal error that may cause, very likely will cause litigation. One, deny the dissolution ordinance. Two, request or allow the CSC to request an attorney general opinion on this issue. Three, give the issue of dissolution to the voters.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were at the end of your sentence.
I am. So I ask that you not dissolve this, that is contrary to law, what be handled out, and that you consider an AGO opinion, which I believe...
Now, Ms. Ruzenka, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Because you're pro bono for the board. To your knowledge, has the board gone out for additional attorneys to try to, try to fight this commission? Shall we repeal the board?
Yes. I have actually talked to five different law firms, statewide law firms. One has agreed to represent them. They have not yet filed the paperwork, but they will do so. And they do intend to, because there is legal support that what you're doing is illegal.
Okay. Well, I have two attorneys, both, you know, from 2000, and our current sitting attorney, that say otherwise. And I think our statute's pretty clear, but we can disagree on that.
No, they never addressed it in your memos. They just concluded you have taxing authority, that they don't have taxing authority. They're wrong.
All right. Commissioner Loeb?
First, I just want to thank you for a direct response to my earlier question, Ms. Ruzenka. And second, Ms. Eden, thank you, if I may. I'm not going to go through item by item that Ms. Ruzenka brought up. Obviously, I've spoken with Ms. Ruzenka previously. I think she's a competent attorney. I think you're a competent attorney as well. She represents them, and you represent us. That said, are you confident, with the knowledge that you have at present, that we are in solid grounds doing what we're doing, regardless of how we should rule on this today, or how we should decide on this particular motion?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Bunny Finney, and after Bunny Finney, we'll have Bart Getchins. Name an address, please.
Good morning. I'm Bunny Finney, reside on Meridala in 436 Magnolia Avenue. I serve as the Children's Services Council Vice Chair. And on behalf of our Chair, the Honorable Kelly McKibben, she sends her sincere regret that this morning's item could not be held until February, when she could attend in person. Due to the short notice, and combined with the holiday weekend, Judge McKibben could not change her Circuit 18 Criminal Felony Court docket, as she has 35 trials scheduled for today. On behalf of the CSC, Bart Getchins, CSC Treasurer, and I appreciate that Commissioner Isnardi has offered us, as Judge McKibben's designated speakers, an extended time to pass her thoughts along to the Commission.
Are you, just to interrupt, are you the designated person for Ms. McKibben?
Bart Getchins and I are as the officers of the Commission.
Okay, let's pause this.
And you have our commitment that our comments today will be very concise.
I was going to say, are we going to split the time, or do you want to, I mean, I just want to be fair to all the speakers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
You have our commitment that our comments today will be concise, and will focus on clarifying and legal points germane to this item. I have three points to address. Number one, CSC achievement. Number two, CSC authority to incur debt. And number three, the Commission's opportunity to participate in CSC appointments. Point one regarding CSC achievements over the years. In 1990, we were formed. The next few years were spent seating the council, forming, organizing, writing bylaws, et cetera. In 97 to 2002, the CSC was contracted by Brevard Public Schools to deliver a DOE grant that created a shared services network. That grant was over $100,000. In 99 to 2003, over those five years, we engaged with the privatization of foster care through TIP, Leadership Roundtable, and the Community Alliance. Ultimately, the Brevard Family Partnership was created, with Brevard County Government as a partner. In 2000, we received a large, undesignated private donation, in the amount of $200,000, from Holmes Regional Medical Center, to move our business forward. From 98 to 2005, in those eight years, we provided a local kid care match, at a cost of over $26,000. In 2008, reporting rules changed to exclude private source dollars from full audit and insurance requirement, and it was determined that CSC qualified as funding was private. If you recall, the economy in 2008, the potential... If you recall, the economy in 2008, the potential for a successful referendum was negative, so the CSC scaled back to meetings one to two times a year as necessary. 2009 to 11, we, at the Recommendation Leadership Roundtable, partnered with the Brevard Public Schools and other community partners and funded the Whole Child Connection project at $25,000 and served 36,000 unduplicated families. From '08 to '14, we met annually, considered the community climate. '14, we did some initial polling, had new members of the public sector seated onto the CSC, and we determined we wanted to move forward with seeking millage. The subsequent years, 16, 17, we researched and discussed over 15-plus meetings and site visits and concluded it was time to move forward. Regarding the CSC incurring debt, existing Brevard County Ordinance 9041 makes clear on this point. Section 4 Powers and Functions reads, "The Children's Services Council of Brevard County shall have the following powers and functions, provided, however, that such functions and powers shall not be implemented unless and until a funding source is established through the passage of a referendum in accordance with the provision of Section 6 of the ordinance." Items A, B, C, and E address service provision, funding limits, and hiring. Excuse me. D addresses incurring debt, and it reads, "To lease or buy such real estate, equipment, and personal property, and to construct such buildings as are needed to execute the foregoing powers and functions, provided that no such purchase shall be made or building done unless paid for with cash on hand or secured by funds deposited in financial institutions." Point three, CSC appointment vacancies. We have an opportunity for the Commission to engage with the CSC. There's currently a seat open for appointment, two more open this May, and as in the past, this is the opportunity for the Commission to move forward their selected nominees in recommendation to the Governor's Office. In closing, the members of the CSC are committed to Brevard's children. We applaud the past commissioners who have partnered with cross-sector, private, public, and governmental efforts for the safety, well-being, and security of our children. We urge you to seriously consider the clarifying and legal points addressed today and ask you, if not in concert with the CSC, what is your plan to ensure that services for Brevard's children are in place? Thank you for your time and service.
I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. Rather than go through this opinion piece that was modified from the media that you sent to the Space Coast Daily versus what is on the Children's Services Council of Brevard, I just wanted to sort of go over a couple of things that you'd stated because people were quick, everybody had a rebuttal to my comments on my interview, but I want to be very clear about something. I was appointed to the Children's Services Council, so as far as me attending two meetings and having my staff, which you failed to mention, also attended those meetings, I did provide input. I asked questions. I, you know, I told you my concerns of what I thought the voter would be, what the voter's concerns would be, and in here you claim that I provided no input, so I don't think that that's fair. And again, I could piece apart this entire thing, but if we're talking about voter perception, and Mr. Keel brought that up, and we're talking about being honest versus being dishonest, I mean, I'm not going to get in back and forth with you. I just want to be very clear that it's that on both sides. And, you know, I even have, if anybody's interested, I can put them on the overhead, some very, very negative and disparaging comments that were, they're generally designed to mislead the public, kind of like marching the children in today during the item. I think, I think that's great. I think it's fantastic. But I think, I think you need to realize, and again, I'll wait till my discussion, but, and I have a question about the poll. I realize, and we did provide proper public notice despite what's been put out there in the media, we did provide proper public notice, correct, Ms. Bentley?
Yes, it was advertised on January 12 pursuant to statute.
And discussed during January 8. And I know you don't agree with how we went about it, but we handled it legally and fairly, in my opinion, as far as the fairness part goes. About that poll, about that poll that you guys had, I think the information was gathered in January, do you have a lot of information about that poll as a vice chair of that committee?
Specifically.
Or, you know, can I ask where, who turned you on to that group to do the polling, or how you learned of that group that does the polling?
We have a resource, a state resource for the Children's Services Council of Florida, who help assist Children's Services Council across the state and work cooperatively in helping support one another, and it was a firm that specializes in this kind of polling. If you look at the ordinance, the, I'm sorry, I don't have all of my papers in front of me, but if you look at the 9041, Section 4, Item 1 and 2, speak to, it's a sequential directive of how Children's Services Councils get off the ground, how they're formed, et cetera. And the first two items talk about the responsibility of doing research and know your community, and that's the first part of it. And that's part of what that whole piece was.
And I don't disagree with that because that's even in the state statute, four Children's Services Council that receive a taxing authority. What I guess I'm a little concerned about is that that poll polled 400 people, about 70 people in my entire district, that covers five municipalities, large portions of five municipalities. And what's concerning to me is that that poll, this big private donation money that the council's sort of been getting by with, paid $17,000 for that poll. And that's a lot of money to pay for 400 people. I mean, where do I sign? I mean, and that's why I'm asking how this came about because I would have hoped that you would have had different advice or perhaps, you know, or maybe talked to more people because that's a lot of money. And then another over $2,000 for a consultant. I'm not sure what the consultant did, but what really disturbed me was the rumor that this poll not only contained the children's information, I just want to ask this question, is it true that that poll also polled elected officials? That that poll, that poll, that poll asked the members that answered the questions how they felt about certain elected officials, whether they found them favorable or not?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Kim.
The person that caused the poll is here, can answer your questions.
Okay, that's why I asked her if she had information.
Yeah, and she is here who can answer all your questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you don't have to answer the questions. I just, I wasn't sure, and that's why I asked because-
If you'd like the response, the individual is here, if you'd like for her to respond to you.
I mean, if she would like to. Hi. Can I get your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Catherine Rudolph. I live at 625 Barcelona Court, Satellite Beach.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead, just leave it off.
Do you have a specific question, or would you like to hear my comments?
Well, I mean, the question is, did that poll contain favorability rankings for elected officials that are currently elected to office?
Yes, the poll went through, which we can provide a sample of the poll, I'm happy to do so. I have the methodology and the summary here with me if somebody wants to make copies after I finish. But yes, in addition to going through, well, let me, let me go for two parts. Yes, we do test the elected official favorable unfavorability, and that was for the purpose of seeing who would help be the best spokesperson should we go to ballot for this. So at the time, Desmond Blackburn currently sat on the board. We did other members of the County Commission, as well as Sheriff Ivy, who's also well-known in his support of various nonprofits and children entities, and that was in order to help the Commission understand who may or may not be a good spokesperson.
I heard that the only member of County Commission that was polled was Mr. Commissioner John Tobia.
That might be true, yes. I do believe Commissioner Tobia, but it was Desmond Blackburn, let's see, it was Desmond Blackburn, it was Wayne Ivy, and it was Commissioner Tobia.
Okay.
So if I might enlighten to your point about the 400, I'm not sure if you've ever studied statistics or if you have any history in conducting polling, but a relevant sample for a community the size of Brevard County is actually only about 300 people, and that is a sample size that would be used to be determined statistically relevant. And that is, again, this is the scientific methodology used by polling firms and polling companies. So in addition to selecting ballots or bids to, you know, pick who they use, and they did select one of the most highly respected research companies in Florida called Clearview Research, we actually chose to oversample because of the large nature of our community. So rather than just use a statistically relevant sample size of 300, they opted for the 400 so they could account for the large physical size of Brevard County and pull more voters from each of the five districts. Now with that, there's also the term of statistical relevance. So not only when you do political research, do you want to have a sample size that's statistically relevant, but you want to pull from the voting population that actually reflects the larger population that you're trying to understand. I would make the example here, we, in conducting this poll, which is an average cost of polling that you would find, you know, for anyone to conduct across the state, and many of you've run for office, and you've probably conducted polling and are well aware of the expensive cost of doing polling. The representative sample size means that you try to pull various demographics to reflect the community that you are. So the polling went through and made sure that we had 47% male and 53% female to reflect the population of Brevard. We went through the various partisan IDs to make sure they were accurate depictions of the partisan breakdown, as well as race, and then again by age group, and then finally by County Commission District. And that's relevant because while the group of people that are coming up before you today make very valid points, and I know many of the speakers that have spoken out against the CSC, I would remind all of you that they are in no way a representative sample of the population of Brevard County as a whole, and they are in no way a statistically relevant sample size of the entire relevancy of your Brevard County voters, whereas the poll that the council paid for is statistically relevant. And the results are quite plain in our poll, which actually took place a year ago, it was January 23 through the 27th, that before they knew what a Children's Service Council was, just right out the gate, the first question, would you support funding it, 58% of voters said they would. Now, that's no surprise if children services, you know, people want to support services. And then after 12 questions explaining what they may or may not pay for, the different items that they may or may not pay for, and then after repeating in two different ways, if they understood if it was a property tax, the poll went up to 64% approval rate.
But it doesn't say increase in property tax. It says use property tax dollars.
It says-
And if you look at that specific question and just-
All it says, and I will quote from it, "A yes vote is to use property tax money to fund these local services."
Which I would interpret, excuse me, which I would interpret-
That makes people 56% more likely to support it.
Which I would interpret as use property tax services. It doesn't say increase my property taxes to fund this. That's a very clear difference.
Number 24, question 24, "The Children's Service Council would be funded with property tax dollars, the same, and some say that is not fair, to make property owners pay for the cost of services. Does this make you more likely or less likely to support the Children's Service Council?"
Again, property tax dollars, not increasing your property tax dollars.
Well, if you would like to come to council meetings next time you're appointed to it and make that feedback when they reviewed what questions would be asked in the council, that would be wonderful input that you could have provided.
"The Children's Services Council would be funded with property tax dollars, and some say that is not fair." Likely is 48%, hardly the 58% of a poll. And if you look at, and we could go through all the questions if we want to get really in the mud, and go through all of the questions to where you try to say, "Do you support funding for this? Do you support preventative child abuse?" It's very slanted, and I do know about-
Commissioner Zanardi, it's not slanting when it's research. When you're asking the public, if the money went towards this, is that, would you like, would you support dollars to go toward? So it's helping the council make a decision and saying, you know what, we learned from this, is that if it's a preventative nature and it has something to do with what I'll call more hard-line issues, preventing delinquency and that sort of thing, people were much more supportive. When it's the soft issues of, you know, childcare, or what was the lowest performing one, to help reduce teen pregnancy, those are on the lower end. So this is statistical, scientific research, not anecdotal leading to understand where the, I don't know if you do, because malign a 400% or a 400 poll is somehow being irrelevant.
I've taken plenty of statistics classes.
I'm sure you have.
I'm currently working on my dissertation, and so I well appreciate the insult. And I understand you're upset, and I understand that you probably have something to gain from this because you're operating, I, you know, we can put, if you want to get-
Go there, let's go there.
If you want to get personal-
Tell me, how am I going to gain from this?
We can put on the, on the overhead, you misleading the public based on what our initiative is here today.
Let's do that.
We could just read it because I don't, I don't know how much more time I want to waste on this, but-
All the time you want, Christine.
Hello, parents. If you're tired of long waits and high costs to access behavioral therapies for your children, or sick of driving to faraway areas because we don't have the services your child needs here in Brevard, if you think it's shameful, lack of quality, affordable childcare in Brevard, or if you think it's simply unacceptable that despite having at least seven Brevard children commit suicide in one school year, we still have no programs for low-cost child counseling, or if your heart aches that the number of homeless children and families is on the rise in what is supposed to be family-friendly slice of heaven, well, please help express disappointment that Brevard County Commissioner Christina Zanardi is trying to dissolve the Children's Services Council of Brevard, which would imply to this Space Coast Moms Swap Shop and Talk that I was taking away services. State statutes, excuse me-
No, you're taking away the voter's right to ever vote on funding a CSC. That's what you're taking away. The voter's right to make a decision on this issue as outlined by state statutes.
Excuse me, I was talking. State statute specifically says that people hold the authority to decide they want to invest in children's services, prevent funding for kids competing with whims of political politicians ideological, I'm sure it was a spelling error. While the council was funded in 1990, founded in 1990, it has never been funded, and that's not under our control. Obviously, if the commissions of the past almost 30 years had decided to put it to referendum, they would have. Finally, a movement begins to try to place the question before the people, and Commissioner Zanardi wants to deny the voters the opportunity to do so. There was four commissioners that didn't want that on the referendum, didn't want that to referendum.
And you're the one who's made the motion to dissolve it.
And this is exactly why, because it becomes political, misinformation gets out there, the public doesn't understand completely because the ballot language doesn't portray that. It just asks you if you want to fund these services. It doesn't tell you that this is a tax that's going to be in place for 12 years. It doesn't tell you that you have the authority to go up to a maximum real trade. It doesn't tell you that only two elected rotating officials actually sit on the board that don't even themselves belong to the same body. It doesn't tell you that places like United Way and other organizations are getting millions of dollars through these agencies in other cities, and it doesn't tell you that there's no voter recourse. There's no voter recourse when only-
There literally is voter recourse because it's a direct tax. Only the voters can vote on it to provide the taxing-
It's 12 years before it comes, there's nobody with that kind of term limit.
If you would like to make it less, you could make a proposal to say that we want-
I don't think this is productive, so we're going to move on. We're going to, Bart Getchens?
May I ask a couple of questions?
Oh, sure.
I decline to answer. Thank you.
Okay, you don't want to answer anything I have to ask?
Because it's not about, it's not about facts or the issue.
Okay, well, can I pose my questions to Mr. Getchens?
Yes, sir.
The young lady that was just up here, what is her position with respect to the CSC?
She is a volunteer.
Does she have a title, or does she have some particular interest in it?
There is not a specific title.
So when you say she's a volunteer, what's the nature of her volunteerism? What's her involvement?
Social justice, Maria. I have volunteered with the CSC, and I have volunteered with Put Brevard Kids First. I've received no funding or no payment at all for any of the work that I have done for them. This is on a volunteer basis because I have spent the majority of my free time since I have left politics for full-time as an occupation, as a volunteer advocating for children's issues.
Okay, so you said you're also involved with Put Brevard Kids First. What is that?
That is a PAC that was formed, as Mr. Keel said, with the explicit purpose of running the public education campaign should the ballot have been, the, what would it be, the language had been put before the referendum, should the referendum, their expressed purpose in forming that was to raise funds. We have since not raised any funds and not done anything, and until this resolution came forward, we've not done anything but share articles of relevant, you know, child welfare, you know, articles that come out in the news, and that's the extent of our organization.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask you.
And you said you're not involved in politics no more, aren't you the executive director of the Brevard Business Voice that runs PACs, that endorses candidates? That's a very political organization. It's kind of a political position.
Right, and I retired from politics full-time in 2010, and I currently work about 10 to 15 hours a month, on a good time during an election, maybe 20, 25, for Business Voice. So no, that is not full-time work. I am a full-time mother, and I work part-time advocating for causes I believe in. Are there any other questions?
In politics. Thank you.
That's all I wanted to ask you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tobia?
Yes, this is getting a little heated, so I just got a text, and I, I'd like to know which politician got the highest favorability, and I'm not saying that text came from a guy in green with a badge, but-
It was Ivy, of course, yeah. Sheriff Ivy was the highest.
I just knew-
You were, you were lower than Ivy.
Oh, multiples, I imagine.
I only printed out the summary and the summary of them.
If I wasn't the lowest, then it probably wasn't a good poll. I just wanted to make sure that Wayne Ivy got his name out there.
And do you know, Commissioner Ivy, was he approached, and does he endorse this?
No, he, well, to my understanding, and I won't speak to that if they asked if he knew that he was being, I don't know that Desmond knew as well, I don't think Commissioner did. It was more of a research, again, to see who, you know, and they're speaking about the CSC, who's going to-
So you don't know-
the CSC, who's going to, whose voice would lend out.
So you don't know whether or not he was asked to promote or endorse this measure?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. I mean, if commissioners are interested, I can tell you, he was approached and he, he does not support this measure. He can't be here, he's indistinct, and I'm not going to speak for him, but he did give me permission to, to give that information.
Do you want to recess? Do you want to recess for a few minutes?
No.
Good morning. Bart Getchens, 1535 Mallard Court, Titusville. Just a point of clarification, I spoke to some other Children's Service Council representatives here, and we did not have the children come in. So I don't know if they came in voluntarily or someone asked them of it, but the council itself did not ask them to come in. So just to clarify. My name is Bart Getchens, and I am an officer of the CSC and serve as the council secretary. I have been on the council for less than a year. Before joining the council, my application was approved by this commission, and I thank you for your approval, and my application was sent to Governor Scott for appointment to this council. I joined the council for one reason, the task you asked of me when you approved my appointment, to fight for the needs of the underserved children of Brevard County. Every council member I work with shares the same vision, to make this a better community for our children. I want to stress, I never forget that I represent each of you, this commission, and the taxpayers of Brevard County. Our special interest is the children of Brevard County in determining how we as a council can find a manner in which this council will seek and provide funding for the children's unmet needs. I respectfully ask you to allow this council to continue to fight for this most noble cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Getchens. Okay, after, we have Nick Tumbleides and Ken Mater.
I apologize to anybody watching and to, you know, the, the public. I don't apologize for feeling passionate about this issue, as I'm sure that others, speakers and otherwise do as well. But I know a lot happens in meetings and people's emotions get the better of them, and I'm, I'm human too, and, you know, I don't, I'm not proud of, of getting worked up on an issue, but at the same time, you know, to, I just apologize, and hopefully we can move on and finish in an orderly fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Tumbleides, 812 Handsome Cab Lane in Melbourne, and I just wanted to say, I thought what that last speaker did was extremely disrespectful and that she should be ashamed of herself, frankly. And, and by the way, she, she claims to be a volunteer right now, but if this thing is ever to obtain taxpayer funding, you can bet dollars to donuts, $120 million to donuts, that she is going to be the CEO making $220,000, just like they do in Palm Beach. This, this is a scam. It is crooked as a $3 bill. And, you know, I, I cannot say that this is, this is a good charity in any way, shape or form. This is an abject scam to line the pockets of the political elite. And how do we know that? Well, we know that because that's already how it works in Palm Beach and Broward County, where the politicians and the voters were duped into funding this. Palm Beach and Broward collectively spent $25 million on executive buildings. In Palm Beach, the council CEO does rake in $220,000, and they have 15 more executives who are making at least $100,000 a year. Pardon my naivete, but I don't see how executives driving around in Ferraris helps the children at all. Make no mistake, there is nothing compassionate about stealing and spending other people's money. Imagine, if you will, that you were in a church and the offering plate made its rounds. Would you dare reach for the wallet of the man next to you, pull out his dollar and put it in the collection plate? Is that compassion? Taxation isn't compassion. Taxation is theft. And government is not some magic wand to force people to fund things that they wouldn't fund on their own. I've been wondering, how has this charity gotten by over the last 30 years? They've accomplished essentially nothing. I went on their website this morning. Would you believe that there is not even a donate button on their website? If you want to give these people a private contribution, you cannot. It's impossible, because they've put all their eggs in the basket of winning the taxpayer lottery. And if they don't get it, the people who run this thing are going to be on the next bus to Pittsburgh. They don't care about the taxpayers, they just care about lining their own pockets. And even if the CSC got its money, and by some miracle, they didn't waste it on bureaucracy, this would still be a failure, because welfare programs never work. Since government declared a war on poverty in 1967, they have dumped $22 trillion into the problem. The federal government currently runs over 70 different means-tested programs, providing cash, food, housing, medical care, social services to poor and low-income people. It costs nearly $1 trillion a year, and what do we have to show for it? Record-high unwed birth rates, the destruction of fatherhood, total dependency, and a poverty rate that remains unchanged. Please vote to repeal the Children's Services Council. It is a terrible program. Opposing it doesn't mean we don't love children, it means we want the best for everyone, real charity provided at the level closest to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Schomer, and after Diane, we're going to have Rob Raines.
Sure.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Thanks. One for you. You got it. And one for you, and the remainder this way.
Hi, my name is Diana Schomer. I live at 1180 Montego Bay Drive North, Merritt Island. And I'm, I'm here today to also speak against this putting them on the referendum. Abe Lincoln said many, many years ago, "You cannot and you should not do for people what they can and should do for themselves." And he also said that charity is not the business of government. There are many worthy causes out there, but I believe that Brevard County has gotten so far off track with all the funding of all the charities and the 20-plus CRAs, which are community redevelopment agencies, which are charities for local businesses, that you never have enough money to do the basic jobs anymore. I would implore you to do away with the steady stream of charities that come here for money and do away with the CRAs, which are siphoning off millions and millions of dollars, and their funding grows exponentially while what the county gets stays at a base rate. I tried to get an accounting for the amounts and it, from given to charity by Brevard County, and it came in in bits and pieces, and that's part of what the handout's for. The information I have is from fiscal year 2015 to 2016. I had asked for the data in 2017. On the list are 20 charities totaling $2.9 million, and this does not mention all of them. One email said that Lead, Brevard, was funded with $40,700, and my region got $25,000. I have no idea what other, either of these do. In addition, the North Brevard Economic Development Zone, which operates the same as a CRA, gave $35,000 to the nonprofit Greater Titusville Renaissance. So now our charities are giving to other charities. That same year, the development zone got about $3 million from the Brevard County General Fund. I believe it's wrong to tax people to give to your favorite charities. That should be our choice to make, not yours to make for us. Charities all have come to the conclusion that it is easier to get money from the government than it is to get donations. It shouldn't be. I urge the commissioners to go over this entire scope of gift-giving, to see what the real totals are, and to start reining it in. If you don't, the list will continue to grow and grow. By all means, stop the Children's Services Council, it's only the tip of the iceberg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. After Rob Raines, we have Joe Shim.
Hi, I'm Rob Raines. I live 503 Kimberly Drive in Melbourne, Florida. First, I want to thank you for your service. You all have a challenging job, we're seeing that this morning, and I respect your leadership in putting yourselves out there. Regretfully, I don't have time to address the many misleading and misinformed comments. Some of them have been addressed, not a charity, not a scam, lack of understanding of, of how services work in the community. I'm also kind of sad about the dark-hearted world some people live in, and that people have such contempt for people they don't even know. But I ask you to, not to dissolve the Children's Services Council. One of the issues brought up hasn't even been mentioned today as a reason we have to do this in a hurry, or supposedly, is the idea that the council would take on debt. That's not going to happen, that's sort of a red herring. As to taxation without representation, I believe that is also misleading. This is not some king imposing a tax. If this ever were to happen, it would be a mandate from the voters. They would have to approve it, and it's limited, and it would have all kinds of rules and regulations on how that would work, and there would be all kinds of oversight on, on that. I ask the, the commission not to, to do this, because you already have control here. We believe, the commission asked the, the council, we came in July, and said, hey, if you want this, go back and get superintendent, get petitions. And we agree that it appears that that cannot be done with Commissioner Snartie and, and the county attorney, that the signature petition ballot pathway for a special taxing district doesn't appear to, to work. So this cannot go to ballot. We're not talking about a tax, we're talking about whether to dissolve the council today or, and repeal the ordinance, or not dissolve the council. I think it'd be a bad idea to dissolve the council today. The statute would still exist, in Florida statute, so it could be recreated. You wouldn't kill it forever, you would kill it now. And if you kill it now, that's a disservice to you, to future commissions, and to, and to voters. Because having a council now, you have the ability to, to shape the policy with that. You have the ability, all of, you have six out of the 10 members of the council come from the county commission. One sits on it, five, none of the five of governor appointees can get there without the commission approval. So with a seated community services, Children's Services Council, they can make decisions and get the answers to the questions that you had. You had many good questions about where the dollars are going to go. If, if it is killed and resurrected, you won't be able to get answers to those questions. So please, work with the council. Let the council be an arm of the commission to learn more about the needs of children, shape the council, and provide, allow that opportunity for voters to have input. And, and let's not waste dollars on, on legal fees when you already have the control. It's never going to go to the ballot without a commission vote.
Oh, that was perfectly timed.
I practiced.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Christian Oliver?
Just a quick question for you, because I heard some comments from the audience when Mr. Tumbleides was up, speaking about his thoughts with respect to Ms. Rutloff and what, if any, capacity she would have moving forward. Have there been any discussions with respect to her assuming a, or potentially obtaining a paid position with the CSC or with any affiliated agency or entity?
No, 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 not at all. I was, I was kind of, to quote Luke Skywalker, amazing, everything you just said was wrong.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And congratulations on, on being elected.
Thank you, sir. And I appreciate you being respectful to the commission as well.
You deserve it.
I think you, you do certainly much, much greater service to your cause than some of your compatriots.
Right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Joe Shim, and after Joe, we have Mary Murray.
Good morning, I'm Joe Shim. I live at 401 Dakota Avenue, Cocoa, Florida 3296. So I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in support of the CSC and against dissolving the county ordinance that created the CSC. I just want to let you know that I'm a longtime healthcare advocate. I have done case management for a few years. I've helped people with their Affordable Care Act applications for two years, and so I see a lot of need in the community. And also, I worked with a group that helped to reestablish the Kid Care Coalition in Brevard. So I am, you know, very familiar with a lot of healthcare and children's issues, and I know there's a lot of need in the community. I commend the CSC for exploring ways to obtain funding to fill the gaps in available services for children, such as the early childhood education. Do you know that they actually help provide or enable parents to actually send their child to good daycare, so their parents can actually go out and work? And that's a big need for many in the community to actually be able to afford daycare. Services for developmentally disabled, if you've ever talked to somebody with a developmentally disabled child, you'll know that sometimes, some of them are actually on the waiting list for 20 years to get healthcare services. Homeless children, there's a great need in Brevard. Those at risk for delinquency, delinquency prevention, and services for children who are physically, intellectually, or emotionally challenged. We still, whatever services are available elsewhere, we still need help with all these. And I believe that the CSC could be a, an organization that could help coordinate and get the necessary funding. The CSC has a potential to provide much-needed services. Why dissolve such an organization? So I say, let's keep something that's good for the community, let's work with them to see how they can provide the services. If it can't be done through a ballot initiative, let's do it some other way, let the people decide, let's put it out for a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Murray, and then after Mary, we'll have Stacy Patel.
Good morning, I'm Mary Murray, and I live at 1765 Lakeside Drive in Titusville, and we've been residents of Florida since November 1st. I came from the state of Minnesota, and at the age of 18, I was dealing with an unplanned pregnancy, married, just accepted into Stanford University. But needless to say, our income was not at a level that could afford for that pregnancy to either move forward or not need assistance. She's now 40 years old. I'm the grandmother of four grown children and 10 grandchildren. So it's something that's very near and dear to my heart. I was somewhat disturbed by the fact that the children that came in today were moving on to see another part of our government, and we're here to see respectful debate. Some of the comments from the audience were disturbing, especially as they left. I and my husband, who is 72 years old and is on a fixed income, have decided to come to the state of Florida because of the weather, not because of less taxation, although in Minnesota, we have 10,000 lakes and 10,000 reasons to tax you. But we have an environment in which is very solid, thriving, and growing. Unfortunately, the weather isn't. I went on to get my undergraduate, University of Miami, my master's from Wharton University. I worked as an executive, making that $250,000 for the hard work, then went on to start my own businesses that thrived for many years. If it had not been for the coming together of the CSC in Minnesota, we would not have had the opportunities that we had moving forward. It ended up being a success story, but it was the coordination of all of those services that allowed us to move forward. Today, the minimum wage is, I believe, $9 here, and at $9... Thank you. $8.49. And at $8.49, working 40 to 60 hours a week, I could not have afforded the healthcare for my children, let alone driven to Orlando, if I lived here, in order to receive those services. Our children are important, we need to do whatever we can to bring those services that make them a success like I am closer to our homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. After Stacy, we'll have Mary Bromen.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Stacy Patel. I graduated from Satellite High School, and unlike many...
What's your address?
I'm sorry. Unlike many of my peers, I moved back to Satellite Beach. I live at 315 Jackson Avenue. Nelson Mandela once wrote that there can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way that it treats its children. And yet this morning, advocates for children are in these chambers in hopes that the commission won't dissolve the local Children's Services Council. And this afternoon, will be across the street rallying with teachers that the school board refuses to pay a fair wage. It's unclear to me why our community's leaders fail to prioritize the need... It's unclear to me why our community's leaders fail to prioritize the needs of our community's children. When I was much younger, I lost my brother in this county to an overdose. In my niece's graduating class at Satellite two years ago, two children committed suicide. Tens of thousands of local children live in poverty, as I once did, though my father worked for the service. Last year alone, nearly 3,000 homeless children were enrolled in Brevard County schools, and seven local children took their own lives. I don't have children of my own. But we don't invest in children because we created them, but because we love them and we respect them, and because ultimately, they create the world and the community in which all of us will live. It's clear that at least one of you believes that charities and nonprofits should absorb the cost of provision of social services to our children. But our children warrant consistently funded public services that meets the needs of all of our children and are responsible and accountable to all members of the public. The commissioners should understand well the limitations of private funding in providing for the public good. We already live in one of the oldest congressional districts in the county. If we want to build a thriving community with a real future, we must invest in the health and well-being of children and families. I hope this commission will reject the chair's motion to dissolve the Children's Services Council. It's amazing to me that democratically-elected officials are so afraid to allow our community to democratically determine whether to fund the Children's Services Council.
Mary Broman.
Thank you. My name is Mary Bowman. I live at 211 Pintree Drive in Indy Atlantic. And this was not planned, but I grew up across the street from Stacy's mother. We were dear friends. And I too have just lost a family member to an overdose. Her two daughters will grow up without their mother. We'll take care of them, they have families. But the children at the Haven for Children don't have families to take care of them. And that's where I have been a volunteer, and I have worked with Ms. Rudloff. I want to make one point. There was an opening for a development position. She and I were the development directors as volunteers that year. She could have taken that if she was interested in money. It would have been hers without an interview, knowing her dedication to the cause. One of the reasons that I come for the CSC is to support my friends who have worked so hard and have never taken a penny. They all donate more than their average amount of money to these causes. She spends hour after hour trying to balance motherhood to taking care of the children that don't have mothers. It's so hard for me to sit and listen to them being disparaged this way, knowing the That was the main thing I wanted to say. I would like to ask you to table this and wait and think about it, and let us have more time for comments. I don't understand why it's so urgent to dissolve a group that doesn't cost the county any money. I too do not like high taxes, and I'm not sure how I would have voted. But at this time, it costs me nothing. It hurts no one, but it does have an opportunity to help. And I don't want to pay for a lawsuit. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that closes the public comments. Did you want to speak first, or do you want me to?
Let me, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
I just want to get a few things out. There's a lot that's already been covered with respect to the good, the bad, and the ugly on both sides. There are a few things I want to touch on that I don't think have been adequately covered, my concerns and basically my justification for voting the way I'm going to eventually vote in all likelihood. I don't doubt that children's services is a general concept, or charities that are geared toward helping children are a good thing. But I also don't doubt that homeless charities are a good thing, and that cancer patient charities are a good thing, and that disaster victim charities are a good thing, and that disabled veteran charities are a good thing, and that puppy and kitten charities are a good thing. I've not heard anything today whatsoever that suggests why this cause is more or less worthy than any of the other causes. And as much as I think this deserves funding, I think all of those also deserve funding. So the question that I have is, why tax folks and make a decision that ought to be an individual decision for them without their having indicated to us that that's what they want to do? I have concerns with respect to that. With respect to the speakers, we certainly had some folks on both sides, I think, that were very passionate. I will tell you, there were a couple folks on the CSC side that really did turn me off to the arguments. I think that, without naming names, I think everyone can guess quite easily. I had initially a question where I said, the more direct your response, the more likely I am to be empathetic to your cause, and I had to dance around that question and have to ask it multiple times. We had another individual who came up on behalf of the CSC, who wouldn't even initially listen to my question, and I had to ask another individual that question. And this was after that individual was blatantly disrespectful, let me rephrase that, intentionally disrespectful to our chairperson. I really do resent that. I think that's totally inappropriate, and I think that is beyond counterproductive. If anyone wants to come up here, whether I agree with Commissioner Isnardi or not, if you come up here and you insult her, it's not going to win you any points in my book or any of my other colleagues up here. I really, I don't want to hear about it with respect to anyone. If you're going to come up here to be belligerent and to be nasty, it's not going to help you, and it's not going to help your cause. I will also tell you, I don't think that it's appropriate to try to shame people, to bully them, to threaten them with litigation, or to otherwise try to coerce them into supporting something without just using logic that's sound. And I'm not saying there wasn't any sound logic whatsoever. I think there are good points and bad points on both sides of this. And I know, however, any of us are going to vote, that for those that seek reelection, and I don't know if I'm in that camp or not, this is going to get twisted by folks who will absolutely leave out any semblance of context down the road. So for most of my colleagues, for three out of the five of us sitting up here, that's going to be in 2020, it's either going to be they hate kids and they're pro-suicide, or they love taxes and they want to take away individual choice. Take your pick. However they vote, it's going to be used against them. I will tell you that I did have a preconceived notion with respect to how I was going to vote today. I think that any of us sitting up here really should have, and the reason I say that is because this is important enough of a decision that we ought to have done the due diligence, and we ought to have done the recon that we needed to prior to getting up here. If anyone changed their mind, you know, God bless them, that's their right based on public comment, but I think a lot of this was already hashed out in doing due diligence prior to this vote. I will tell you that of my constituents and of those that reached out to me, even outside of my district, the overwhelming vast majority were in favor of dissolving this. I think in the past day, I may have had two individuals that reached out to me and said, save it, but I don't recall any other individuals. You may have had one prior to that. So my constituents have spoken to me pretty loudly and clearly, and regardless of my personal opinion with respect to the worthiness or how deserving a particular cause is, when my constituents let me know to that degree, and when it's that one-sided, if anyone questions it, do a 119 request. You can get it from my office quite easily. It was one-sided. I just, I don't feel that I have much of a choice based on how overwhelmingly clear my constituents were.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Yeah. Let me preface this. I know this is a very emotional topic, and in some ways, it brought out the best of us, in some ways, it brought out the worst in us, but I think we need to grace the reactions here a little bit, just because of all the emotions that are tied into it. You know, you can say no without being emotional, and you can say yes without being emotional. So I'm going to go through this path, because I'm very emotionally attached to children and puppies and kittens and all those things, but you have to make good decisions that are fair for the good of all the people, and that's what we're, you know, we have to look over that. We have so much we're accountable for as for the rights of all people. Children's Service Council, do I believe they really care and believe for kids? I do. I know these people. They have big hearts. They love children. I don't think there's necessarily anything that's underhanded or ugly. They've got good hearts. You know, even when I've had a few phone calls, you know, I respect them. I don't agree with everything that I've been asked to do and questions given, but I do respect these people, and they care about children. So moving forward from that, are children suffering in Brevard County? Yeah. You know, we've got to figure this out. I think this is almost band-aiding part of the problem, and I don't know how to fix it all, but we've got to do job creation. We have to get people employed. People need to take care of the children. And I'm not trying to, you know, sound like I got a story, and I never knew I grew up poor, raised kids poor, but I typically had two or three jobs and took care of kids. And I don't know how to train people to do that. We're losing a society. And talking about, you know, teen suicides, and I hate it. And I love what Dr. McCarion's doing back in town, trying to address this, but you guys, I'm just going to go out there. Until we get rid of social media for kids, we're going to be staring at a lot worse problems because parents are not raising their kids anymore. Social media is, and so are daycares and schools, and we have a lot of work to do from there. I don't know how to fix all that, but that's something we're going to have to look into. My concerns with this, and I've got a few, and guilty as Commissioner Isnardi, I only went to a couple meetings. And to be fair with you, the first one I went to, you know, I'm in there, and when I asked a couple questions, I was kind of shut down. I was, actually, one response was given to me, you know, I don't care. So I thought, well, what the heck with this. Excuse my Christian cuss word there. But it just, the communication there wasn't easy to do, so I wasn't sure what to do with this board. And then when we started asking about putting this on the ballot, Mr. Faukis, you're right, sir, because we did ask for a detailed report, and we did get kind of a general one back in, but I guess looking at numbers, you kind of want to know where the money's going, where and why. And I really didn't get a breakdown of that. I wanted a target if we were going to do it. Let's say we're going to deal with children in this category, and someone comes in, puts in applications, this is how we're spending the money, and it just wasn't there. It was just too ambiguous, and I just couldn't get on board with it. And it just was too fast and very concerning. And then I listened to the transcripts of the meeting before they were bringing it to the commission, and it kind of gave me a lot of heartburn. You know, I didn't realize that they were going to put it through for one tax and then raise it up immediately after and have more money coming through. So all these things, not that they're not good people, but there's some things that were just very concerning to me as far as how to control taxes. And having taxation with representation, as Commissioner Isnardi said, I totally agree with that. So I think if this would have been under the county commission, that you bring it forward, and you know, you have another board with an advisory board doing it, if this would have been a dependent district, and it had a designated tax for it that everybody in the community voted on, it would have been so different. But at this point, you know, I talked to our county attorney, and you almost got to hit reset and figure out what the people want after this. And it's not like there's a mandated time. It's been 19 years right now, and we haven't moved forward too much with this. But I'm going to vote in favor of what Commissioner Isnardi's brought forth, because I think this just has a lot of work to do as far as oversight and how it's going to be framed and structured. Not that I, Ms. Bunny, I think you're delightful, and the judge is wonderful, and I think there's wonderful people on this commission, so it has nothing to do with my thoughts of integrity on this board. It's just the organization and resetting this and making it something that I think is more fair for the burden of the county.
Any other commission comments?
I'm going to read this statement only because I don't want to get sidetracked, and I don't want to start. But one thing I do want to say, one thing I do want to say, and I think it was Connie Smith that said it, and it's so true, and it's something that I just forgot to put in my notes, because I found myself scaling down the number of reasons why I took issue with this, is that if this went to referendum, all voters would decide, but only homeowners would be paying. So how is that a fair thing for homeowners? I mean, honestly, all homeowners are affected. There's single-parent household, there's elderly senior citizens on fixed incomes, there's lower or middle-class people that are just trying to get by. I mean, that's, again, I was trying not to get sidetracked, but I think that's probably one of our biggest take-home points with all of this, you know? Even if you put it to referendum, which I take issue with the ballot language, and it's addressed in here, so I'm just going to read this because I think it's the best way to keep on track, the best way to keep a motion and out of it, and the best way to just not make it personal, like it's obviously been done to, and perhaps others here. "Children's Services Council was put in place by county ordinance in 1990 by the county commission. While the Children's Service Council rules and memberships are governed by a state statute, the law is clear that the county can repeal this independent district by ordinance. The commission voted and allowed this special district to form in 1990. It went to ballot once and failed in 1992, and came back to the commission and failed for us to put it on referendum." I'm going to try to skim this because it's a little bit long. I mean, there's no question, obviously, where I feel about this. I philosophically and strongly disagree with the collection of ad valorem property taxes to select funding of nonprofits. And I understand the compelling argument for why this is such a great thing, but I think Mr. Lober addressed it well. There are multiple causes. Our office has taken on the initiative of taking care of the elderly and the senior, and we take care of wards of the state that have no family and low income, and there's homeless, and then there's our veterans, and our homeless veterans, and our addicts, and all of these are big issues. And not that children's issues, you know, are they better, are they equal, don't matter, and that's our future, I understand that, but every case, you know, every cause has a compelling case. Bringing the issues to voters can be a great thing, although we're not a direct democracy, you know, like some would like us to believe. We are not a direct democracy. Otherwise, we would look a lot more like California, and I can promise you, if you complain about your taxes now, you can only imagine what it would look like in Brevard County. And I take zero issue with allowing the voters to decide, but I think when we get into an area where the education is a little bit gray, and it's a little skewed, and the ballot language is more emotionally tied than it is factual-based, I think that's where lies the problem. I mean, it happened again when I did that Space Coast Daily interview. I was asked questions. I answered those questions honestly. It's fine if you don't like what I say. It's fine if you disagree with me, and it's even fine if you hate me, or take your few minutes here to try to insult me or make disparaging comments. Go for it. Your First Amendment right, but don't lie about me. Don't misrepresent what I said. Don't say that what I said was a lie. Don't make it look like I don't care. Don't make it look like I want to kick puppies and children. I mean, that's an unfair misrepresentation. And that would be like me saying to you, I know all the board members are crooked. I know, and that may have been said in this room, but it wasn't for me. And that has happened in other councils, so let's not be mistaken. It can happen, and it may not happen with this board, but it could happen with staff. It's a great possibility. But the thing that concerns me the most is the lack of voter recourse. Now, you say that there's representation. I've been rebutted by Mr. Keel, I've been rebutted, you know, the PAC person, and I've been rebutted by Bunny Finney, a board member. That's just a disagreement. You don't have representation when you have a voter recourse. I'm sorry. That is modern-day taxation without representation, any way you spin this, because you are taking attacks from the people, and all the people can do is complain. They can go to the board, they can complain, they can try to figure out which members voted for what of the two elected officials that actually vote, which they're outnumbered, eight to two. I mean, so you tell me how that's representation, because the lovely judge that sits on that board, and Judge McKibben is one of my favorite people, by the way, because I think she's probably got the biggest heart of elected officials next to the sheriff of everybody. I mean, it'd be hard to decide who's at the bigger heart. But she doesn't even get a chance to vote on the ad valorem tax. So there's a maxim, ad valorem, but she can't even decide that. Her vote doesn't count. So that's two elected officials, a school board member and a county commissioner, who collectively don't even sit on the same board outside of that independent district. So yeah, that's what I take issue with. A well-intentioned voter could easily misunderstand what they're, and I think that, you know, if you get away from all the drama and the insults and stuff, that just from the polling alone, when you ask people, do you want us to use some of your tax dollars to fund suicide prevention? Well, yeah, if you can. The other question is, do you want to pay higher homeowners' taxes to fund children's services? You know, and I know this is going to sound a little sarcastic, and I truly don't mean it that way, but if you want true transparency and straightforward honesty, let's pose a question like, is it okay that we raise your property taxes for at least the next 12 years to fund nonprofits for children's services that will not have county commissioners oversight as a board or approval, where seven out of the 10 members hold no elected position in the county, thus meaning you will have no true voter recourse if you do not agree with how the money is spent? I have a feeling that honest language like this would probably give a truer poll, or maybe we can run it again, and hopefully that number will increase like they did with the poll. We could even include in the referendum how the Children's Services Council can hire as many employees as they want, pay them what they want, and buy real property, or lease it if they choose. lease it if they choose. So this is what I take issue with, because there's no recourse. It's not the effort. I've seen some great things from our local charities, some things that you get emotional just talking about, but this is not the way to do it. You don't rob homeowners and have an unelected body deciding who's worthy to receive those dollars. It's just not fair. You know, they've had almost 30 years to bring it to commission with a compelling case, and I thought it interesting, and I honestly don't remember who said it, because there was so many comments flying around. They have never had a fundraiser, and that's an interesting point. I don't know if they have the authority to do that. I mean, I haven't digged deep enough into the statute, and they're shaking their head no, so probably not. But I have had one or two statistics classes, you know, epidemiology and biostatistic, advanced statistics. I'm in my doctorate program, so I'm not stupid when it comes to statistics, despite what was presented. So I understand how polls work. $17,000 to poll 400 people, when half of that data, I'm sure, was probably from web elects, and some of that was from, you know, the state's website for, you know, statistical data. I get that. I still think it's an exorbitant price, and I've asked a few people that run polls frequently. So I mean, and that's what they've done with their private donations, because... And the elected official thing, when I heard that rumor, and of course, I had to ask because I honestly didn't know, I was a little disturbed by that, because I think they... I honestly believe, and I don't know who decided on which questions, if it was a suggestion of the poll, I don't blame the firm in Tallahassee, they do have a good reputation, but Commissioner Tobia probably was selected as the person that would be the biggest opponent of the tax, because then they didn't know how I felt about it, because I was just, you know, placed on the board the year before. I mean, I was going to be placed on the board, and I think they figured Commissioner Tobia would probably give the biggest opposition. And Sheriff Ivy would be their biggest advocate, because he's probably the most beloved politician in the county. I'm not saying that, Sheriff Ivy, so if you hear that, don't let it swell your head. But he polled very well, and he was asked, and he doesn't believe in this either. It's not that he doesn't believe in charity. He's, gosh, I mean, I spoke with him a couple of times over the past few months, and every time, he was coming back from somewhere, doing an auction, you know, going to a dinner, auctioning off ride-alongs, you know, and you won't get anybody that works harder, but he believes as well. And I'm not going to speak for him, but he didn't want to advocate for this, because I'm sure he has the same concerns that I do, at least as far as what role of government is. So I'm going to leave it at that. You know, I can make the motion, I can pass the gavel, I can... Someone else can make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Lober to repeal. Let me get the ordinance number. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this dovetails off of this motion, so the little indulgence.
Okay.
I understand the reasoning behind this proposal. According to Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, there are at least seven independent special districts in Brevard County listed as local governing authorities. Some, like the Baytree Community Development District, has hundreds of thousands of dollars in assessments. Others, like the Walkabout, CDD, appears to do absolutely nothing, much like the one that we dissolved. Not all these independent special districts would have the ability to collect ad valorem taxes. Some may serve important functions. Making things more complex, some may have been created by special acts of legislature, while others may have been created by county ordinance, but under the authority of statute, which has been since revised. Using the review of our advisory boards as a model, I think it would be prudent to ask staff to review independent special districts in the county. So I'd like to make a motion. The motion would be direct staff to conduct a review of independent special districts in the county, including how they were created and any statutory authority, whether they are or could acquire the authority to collect ad valorem revenue, whether they collect assessments, and the methodology of dissolution, should the board so choose. That would be my motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Lober. Any discussion? Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I'll vote in favor of this. Commissioner Tobia, would you mind just sending out what you have up front, so we could start looking into the information you have? I'm just curious.
Sure, Madam Chair. And I was a little hesitant, being the Department of Economic Opportunity has seven, and yet on another website, I found 13. So I'm not even finding a consistency of independent special districts. So at least we would have some opportunity to look at this on a level playing field. But I will be more than willing to shoot this out to everyone's office.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what, I'll shoot it out to the county attorney's office, and probably that would be the most safe under sunshine.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, guys, we're going to take a 10-minute break, if that's all right.
Please.
I'm sorry.